Good evening. This is the June 8th, 2017, meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, held in Town Council Chambers. It is now 7:02. Please, rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will the members of the commission please introduce yourself, starting on my right?
Bruno Maiene.
Alternate.
Jonathan Formkell, alternate.
Kathy Lindstrom, alternate.
David Townsend, vice chairman.
William Porter, chairman.
Paul Lisi, commissioner.
Mike O'Reilly, secretary.
Will Agresta, planner?
Rebecca Wood, recording secretary.
Yeah, we'd like to welcome Bruno, it's his first meeting.
Thank you.
He's appointed to fill the vacant alternate seat. General appointments. Item number four, 550, is it 550 or 560 Main Street?
Number, you skipped over number three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item number three, general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission about any issues that are not related to public hearings?
Yeah, that's, that's good. That's who you want to talk to?
Oh, Jesus.
Okay, you can, all right.
Nothing?
I guess not.
Okay. Item number four, general appointments. 550 Main Street. Anyone here for that? Please come up to the microphone, just your name and address, please.
My name is Evelyn Ellis, this is my wife, Kinlindell, and we're here to discuss 550 Main Street. You want our address?
No, that's fine.
Uh, this is new to us, we've never been through this process before. We would like to open up a dog grooming business and rent the property at 550 Main Street. And we met with Mr. Agresta, and he suggested we come here and discuss the parking layout of the building.
Okay. First, this is a general appointment. This is just an informal discussion where you can, you can have an open dialogue, but nothing, nothing from this meeting is binding.
Okay.
So, we can give you opinions, we can tell you how we feel about things, but it doesn't, we can't be held to it.
Sure.
It's a non-binding dialogue.
Okay.
Okay? Which property is this?
This is the Nagy Brothers' property.
Okay, is this the little, little building?
Yeah.
It used to be a knife shop?
Yep, 560. It was the knife shop at one time.
Okay. So, what are your questions?
Well, uh, we, I guess, need to know what we need to do to be able to get in there and use the property.
I'm gonna try and bring it up, and I can explain maybe a little bit more. What's the, what's the street address of it?
560.
Is this really 200 square feet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
220.
It's like a little cabin.
Yeah.
Does it have heat and electricity?
Yep. But we will have to upgrade the electricity.
Oh, this was 550 Main, and 560.
Is the building empty now?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the property here. The little building is this right here, that's a truck, little red building, and then there's Nagy's business that's further in the back, and his building's here. This is all kind of wide open. It spurs over to here and connects to the side street. And I think the last thing here was a fence company or something.
Yeah.
And one of the issues is there's really no approvals on this property. Things kind of came and went and evolved over a long period of time. And same thing with the driveway. And I don't know if we ever ascertained what exactly the material of the driveway is. I don't believe it's melings. I think it is more of a gravel mix.
It is, yeah.
Yeah. So, the business that they want would require a special exemption permit, because that's where it's listed in the uses, which means that would have to come to the commission. There is no standing site plan, so there's no layout of parking, there's no approval, so there's really nothing other than what you see on the site. And it's basically just a stretch of driveway. There's room to make a couple parking spaces. Technically, I think, under the code, you'd only need one for the business. You know, two obviously makes more sense, someone that works there and someone visiting. And so, in there lied a problem with a couple of things. One, you know, this driveway doesn't really have a permit that we know of, and it would never really be permissible because it's so close to the intersection.
But it's been there for 50 years.
Well, has it? We don't know about it. We know this is-
It's been there for at least 35.
It's been there 50 years, I know.
That driveway cut?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been there.
That's, that's been there as long as I've been in town.
Yeah. Because we know this was. So, there's that issue, but then there's also the issue of if we have to make parking spaces to accommodate this business, the real wrinkle gets into the whole thing that you just adopted as far as the surface material. Because this is not paved.
So, is this building on the same lot as Nagy's?
Yes, it's all one, it's all one big lot.
It is, it's all in one, it's all one.
No, it's all one big lot.
All one big lot.
Is the driveway wide enough to have two parking spaces, like, parallel park?
Well, what we looked at is that, and this is probably gonna widen, but here's the building. It, it's kind of, you could make them. The driveway itself kind of narrows here.
Crosses.
So, I don't think that's really wide enough. But what we were looking at is you could carve out right here two easy spaces. And we were actually talking about having that closed off to deal with the traffic issue. But what we started getting in an issue with is the regulation of it being paved. Because the owner is not interested. He's interested in, he's, my understanding, he will do some stuff, or he's willing to do some stuff, but he really doesn't want, he's not interested in paving anything. So, that comes at odds with your code, if we have to add parking spaces. And I don't know if there was a way that, if we took some of this away and we were just swapping in the net reduction, kind of got away from that issue. I don't know. That's really sort of why we suggested they come and talk to you before they went down a path of full application, which isn't inexpensive.
Is there any way that the apartment couldn't be incorporated with the Nagy's apartment? Now, is there?
He doesn't really have any, I mean-
I'm looking at the picture.
And it's too far away from the building. I mean, you know, I mean, you want to park right next to that building.
I mean, I'm sure you do, but I'm just wondering if maybe-
And he, he would want them too, because he has big trucks and stuff, so he doesn't want them getting in the way of that.
Where that truck is parked, you know, if they widened that out a little bit, that's one space there. And if you did the same thing on the south side of the building, you could add a second space there.
Well, either way, widening and adding is the same, comes at the same, whether we widen and add, or we add two spaces here, the issue comes to that.
Two spaces.
Yeah. So, I guess there's really two issues. One, is the commission interested in rectifying that issue at the same time as letting two spaces be and sort of have a net reduction and not worry about the paving part of it? But is the rest of the site in conformance?
I doubt it.
I mean, he's been there forever.
Yeah, it's, it's, whatever is there is, it, it-
But if you're making changes.
It's pre-existing to any zoning regulations in town.
Yeah, he's, he's been there forever. I mean, I don't know, clean it, but-
Well, it looks like it's some type of a solid base there, that driveway.
Yeah, I think it is, personally.
You know, so if that were to remain as is, and carved out either on the north side or the south side, two parking spaces, so an area 20 by 20.
Yeah.
That would have to be paved for a couple of parking spaces.
Well, that's true. We could look at it that way, that you could just put in the new spaces and just pave the two spaces.
Yeah.
Would, would you have adequate room for deliveries, you know, for some vendor UPS comes?
Yeah, right where that truck is.
Is that where it probably happens anyway? I get all my stuff at a shop or at my house, yeah.
Sometimes-
Except for the small-scale grooming salon, it'll be like four, six dogs per day, appointment only, one person dropping off, one person picking up, not at the same time. It's very scheduled.
Because I mean, there's a possibility that, you know, there could be three cars at one time.
It, it's possible someone's late, yeah. I mean, I work at one now, it works out fine, but that's how we do it.
I just, I'm thinking about, in the eventuality, you know, UPS guy comes to drop, or FedEx comes to drop off something, and, you know, you just need to make sure that there's maneuverability and there's places for people to do their, to conduct their business with.
You know, if there's concerns about that, that driveway cut, we could always make it, you know, one way in, no exit. So, you don't have cars, you know, trying to exit out into the intersection. I wouldn't be inclined to say we gotta cut it off completely.
Yeah. And I don't know, was the owner, did you tell him about that? What was his opinion on that? Or did you not ask him?
Um, he said he would be willing to put parking spots in.
Not the parking, but the driveway.
He, he would consider it, yes. I actually like that, because like, a lot of my clients, some of them, at other places, some of them just drive right up. They, I'm telling you, if you put parking spots here, half of them wanted to use it. They're gonna drive up, open the door, and drop them off and take off.
But we still have to have, we still have to have them.
That's why I know you have to have them, but I just, nobody's interested in using them, I dare to do that.
But actually, Bill, you're right. You could make probably even here two parallel spaces without doing too much, you know. I mean, it's the same amount of paving.
We still, we still need-
Yeah, there's the same amount of paving.
400 square feet of paving somewhere.
Yeah, right, right. So, I, we just, I just thought from looking at it, putting two here, again, we were talking about closing that off and putting two here, and then you kind of had your hammerhead to turn, you know, to turn around and put, even if that stayed, it still makes sense to have the two spaces there. And as I was explaining to the potential applicant is that, you know, if you park your car there, the person coming will see where to park.
Yeah.
You know? So, you don't have that, and if the truck comes, then he can park here and go. History, this truck, funny that it's in the photograph, but was of controversy and was the subject of, I think, a variance application or something that got denied, or some P&amp;Z application that got denied. It was some previous junk dealer or something, I forget what it was, but-
Oh, the junk luggers.
Yeah. And they weren't allowed to have the truck there, so.
Is there room to park in the back of that little building?
There's plenty of room out here.
I mean, like, your car could be around back if necessary?
Room isn't the issue, Kathy. There's tons of them.
The further behind the building, the more paving is required.
Yeah.
You know, we want to try to limit that, you know, that burden on the applicant.
Right, so, so again, you could easily carve out two here or two parallel and pave them. So, when I was talking about the driveway, he's talking about just the spaces, I'm sure the owner probably would be more acceptable to that than, than the whole truck. So, that's the direction they were really looking for before they spent the time and money.
And then there's really no issue with the use, right?
No, it's, it's a permitted special exception, and the intensity is so light that it's not a big deal.
What is there for a septic system there, do you know?
It's already, um, they've already done holes, and it, there's a septic in there now, in the toilet and the sink. It's good just for that. What I am doing is I'm gonna treat it like a mobile grooming, and I'm gonna remove the water from the lot in my-
So, you just have a storage tank?
Yeah, and I have a water in the DEEP right now.
Yeah, the septic can't handle the water usage if it was used directly, so they have to use a storage tank that has to be disposed of. On a daily basis, is that?
Maybe.
Or semi-daily?
Maybe.
Maybe weekly.
Well, probably every, every three days, until I get started, you know, probably every three days, you know, until I get, you know.
And where do you take it to?
Um, I can take it to any public, um, there's, he's gonna work with me, he's found a few places. Um, there's one in Danbury, there's, I can take it anywhere in the sewer system. Um, I can take it to my daughters, I can take it to my friends, anybody, anybody.
Anyone that has a sewer.
Yeah, and I-
As long as it's a sewer, not a septic.
Yeah, a city sewer, yes. I have quite a few places to go.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I have a quick question. What if they just had an entrance from 25? Like, you just have an entrance coming in this way, so like a one-way, like was said before. And then, at the very end, if they don't close it off, it's a right, right turn only, so that we don't try to hop over and come back onto 25 traffic.
That's a possibility.
If, if they're allowed to come out through that backside onto Verna, just make it a right, right-hand turn only. And then, don't allow people to come in through Verna, you have to come in through, so it's all-
I mean, the reality of it is that people are gonna go where they want to go.
They're gonna go in anyway, but if signage is off, it may, it may be a deterrent.
Right, so if anything happens, they're accountable.
I think that that's something that, that if you get to the point where you're going to submit an application, give some thought about how you want to address that driveway. Something is going to have to be done. You know, you have options.
What about, he did mention actually one thing, he said, I didn't, what if he cut a new driveway along the fence line?
Where, further back from the corner?
Yeah, like the diner on half-street. But I, I know he wouldn't pave it.
Well, yes, it would have to, it would have to be paved.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Anything new that you're going to put in has to be paved.
But even if he did that, would that be acceptable, if he was gonna pave it?
He would have to look at the geometry and the dimension. There is a standard for how far back off the intersection it's supposed to be. He probably has room to get to that standard, because I don't think sightline's an issue. But that's a lot more involved than what we've been talking about.
He wanted us to empower him.
Yeah, but that's a potential, if he wants to, but against, you're gonna get into the paving issue.
Again, with the understanding that it would have to be paved.
Oh, yes. So, we're going to move forward as much as we can, and, so I'll ask you, is there anything else we should be considering at this time? We have to go for special exemption.
Right.
Only because it's grooming, and under the B1 regulations, grooming has to be special exemption. But we think we've covered all the bases. We've been researching this for quite a while. So, I can't think of anything else that would get in the way of this going forward?
Yeah, I think the parking is the biggest issue.
Okay.
And I, I think as you put your application together, you should also think about the signage that you would want, because that has, we have certain regulations with signage. And if you need to change anything relative to the lighting, you should think about that too, because we have certain standards for lighting. So, if what's existing isn't good enough and you need to change it, we really need that in the plan. So, we can talk more about that offline, but-
And there, there is a sign there, but that's not reusable?
Well, it is, but I mean, you gotta put your sign. So, if you're just gonna reuse it, that makes it easier than if you wanted to use it on the difference. So, it just has to be, we want to build it into your application.
We're looking for simple, more simple of that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item number five, 824 referral from the Town Council. Some of you may have, may remember this. The Victoria Drive, Penn Victoria Drive, is back of their property to the town, which will be open space. And in order for that to happen, there's state statutes that require certain procedures to be followed. And the Town Council, well, in accordance with the standards and procedures set forth in Connecticut General Statutes 8-24, the Town Council voted favorably to duly refer this matter to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review and report. Should you have any questions or require additional information regarding the specifics of this referral, please do not hesitate to contact me. So, what do we need to do, Will?
You're, you have the, the 824 referral basically as a planning entity, as opposed to the zoning entity, has the ability to review and comment to the council as to whether it makes sense for the community, whether it fits in with the POCD. Obviously, I think that's probably a no-brainer, given that this was part of the application that you all approved. So, I would assume you would render some type of favorable report. And that would just be a letter back to them.
Does anyone have any questions about this?
All right, just to clarify, please. All right, so this is property on Victoria Drive?
It's the, it's the extreme east portion of-
Which backs up to Country Ridge, is that basically what it is?
Yes, it backs up to Country Ridge, and where that little piece went off to Partridge Drive.
Yeah.
So, it's a little over two acres. It's, it abuts all of the residential properties, well, most of the residential properties in the back portion of the lot. This piece of property would become town property, open space, so-
And it'd be merged with an existing town open space parcel. Now, that would get almost more than double the size.
Okay, thanks. Just sometimes it helps to give you a question.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, we don't need to hold on.
No, so if the consensus is, we're just gonna write back a favorable.
Okay. All right, next up, public hearings. Item number six, ZCA 2017-01, 7187 and 431 Web Circle. We have a public notice. In accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 8-7D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Council, Town Hall Council Chamber 7, Panhill Road, Monroe. Actually, this was noticed for April 3rd, April 20th, 2017, and it's been continued a couple of times. ZCA 2017-01, file number 1010D, 7187 and 431 Web Circle, Zone Boundary Change Petition to Change from Multifamily Residence to Residential and Farming District 3, Town of Monroe owner. Also, a read for the record now, SEP 2017-01, file number 1584A, 7187 and 43 Web Circle, Special Exception Permit Application for New and Retroactive Permit Approval of Site Improvements, Driveway Parking, Picnic Areas, Walking Trails, and Open Air Pavilion, Town of Monroe owner. Before we get started, just wanna read the instructions for public hearings. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recording of the proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and speak into it loudly and clearly in order that everyone in the room can hear and to capture what is being said. Individuals speaking from the seats will not be heard and will not be recognized to speak. Rules and Procedures of a Hearing. Order of the Hearing of an Application. Points of Order and Responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or Representatives will present the application and will answer commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. The floor will be open to general comments or questions. The floor will be open to the applicant, who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comment shall be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the chair, who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between speakers and the audience. Commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotion such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote or demonstration by a show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel the need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All speakers when recognized must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding, much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. Okay, Will?
Okay, exhibits for application ZCA 2017-01, file number 1010D. Exhibit number one, Zone Boundary Change Petition Application Narrative and Legal Description. Exhibit number two, Property Warranty Need. Exhibit number three, Wettling's Line Report. Exhibit four, Letter from Conservation Even Holding. Exhibit number five, Noticeance Letter to Aquarian Water Company. Exhibit six, Ferment with Approximate Boundary of Support Plan. Exhibit number seven, A Butter's List. Exhibit number eight, Plan Set by the applicant. Exhibit nine, Town Engineer Comments. Exhibit 10, Fire Marshal Comments. Exhibit 11, Building Official Comments. Exhibit 12, Town Planner Comments. Exhibit 13, A Butter's Certified Mail Resee Green Cards. Exhibit 14, Response to Town Engineer Comments. Number 15, Response to Town Planner Comments. Exhibit 16, Revised Plan Set. Exhibit 17, Updated Planner Comments. Exhibit 18, Updated Town Engineer Comments. Exhibit 19, Letter for Postponing of Public Hearing. Exhibit 20, Letter for Postponing of Public Hearing. Exhibit 21, Response to Comments. Exhibit 22, Updated Plan Set. Exhibit 23, Two-Page Perimeter Survey. Exhibit 24, Updated Town Engineer Comments. That is all.
Okay, for the applicant.
My name is Tom Elbogen. I live at 52 Web Circle in Monroe. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and Mr. Agresta. I'm the park director at Web Mountain Discovery Zone. With me this evening is David Bjorkland, who will be representing the park on the Zone Change Application. We thought that it might make sense for me to give you some background on the park before we delve into the Zone Change and application for Pavilion, which will be, I believe, following this. So, for those of you who are not familiar, Web Mountain Discovery Zone encompasses 171 acres of open space and four miles of trails. It was purchased by the Town of Monroe in 2004 for approximately $4.8 million. It also received, at that point, a $950,000 grant from the Connecticut DEEP. So, this was a substantial investment for the Town of Monroe, and at the time of receiving that grant, that was approximately a third of the state open space funding for the year. So, they gave the town a large grant, in large part because they felt, and he felt at the time, the Conservation Commission felt, that this was a significant property in terms of its diverse ecosystem, and they agreed with that, with that grant. I've requested and received a King's Mark review of the property. For those of you who are not familiar with that, that's essentially state experts who spent time on the property determining what they felt would be the best uses for that property, based on our request for them to come out. And they came back with the determination that outdoor education would be the single best use for that property. Again, that is due to their findings as well, that the ecosystem would serve outdoor education extremely well. So, in 2007, the Discovery Zone opened, in the fall of 2007, with two primary missions. One was to leverage that ecosystem to connect science curriculum for school field trips. The second was to serve as a prototype for the No Child Left Inside movement. And that essentially is a national movement that is trying to get children back outdoors into nature, that missing part of their lives that many children are not experiencing nature today. Studies are showing increased levels of attention deficit disorder, obesity, and depression. So, we feel that this is really a critical piece in children's lives, and so we try to develop programming around ways to encourage children to get outside in nature, experience hands-on activities to reap those benefits. We worked with two of the top state experts initially as well, Hank Bruner, who recently retired as vice president of programs at the Connecticut Science Center. Hank was one of the founders there, and former, now former state archaeologist Nick Bellantoni. The two of them created what we believe is probably one of the most in-depth interpretive trail systems in the state of Connecticut, which includes 27 different learning stations and interpretive signs. And then, Mr. Bruner created a scavenger hunt that foots to those signs. And then Mr. Bruner created a scavenger hunt that foots to those signs. As we became, as people became more aware of us, in 2012, we began running our own ancillary programming, including preschool, after-school, birthday parties, other special events, and summer programs. It was at that point that we began to see that we needed better infrastructure at the park and started to discuss the idea of a pavilion, something to anchor and give us a better focal point, a centerpiece, and essentially create a better first impression. Because a lot of times when people come to the park, when they see a couple of tents, they're just really not aware of all that the park can offer. We have received an extremely generous donation for a pavilion that I believe the commission is seeing, from Charles Edgerton. Mr. Edgerton, over two years ago, has agreed to donate this pavilion in the memory of his son. The pavilion itself is, was selected, or John Kimble actually found the pavilion. John's been one of our initial donors, along with Mr. Edgerton. Spent a lot of time and interest on this project. And he found a pavilion that we really all fell in love with, that will fit so well into our natural setting. It's timber-framed, all hand-cut timbers that fit together without any nails or things like that. So we think it would be a really nice addition, not only for the park, but for the Town of Monroe. We think it'll offer some teachable moments for kids as well. So that's where we are today in terms of our desire for a pavilion. We also obviously know that we need to change our zone, and that's the application in front of you today. I do want to take this opportunity, though, to obviously thank Mr. Edgerton for his generous donation. And Charlie also, I mean, he was involved with us from our, he was at our first field trip. He was at our ribbon cutting. I mean, he was really with us from the beginning. That means a lot to me. I also want to make a special thanks to Mr. Bjorklund, who is representing us pro bono. This is, you know, we initially met and discussed this in terms of a pavilion application. And as you see, it's become, you know, a lot more than that. And Dave has spent a lot of time on this, and there is simply no way that I would have been able to steer this through the thickets of this zoning process. So I want to make a strong mention how much we appreciate all the time that Dave has spent on this, Mr. Kimble, who also donated the survey for this application, and has been very much involved with this. Also, Tom DeBlasi, special engineer in town, has spent a lot of time looking over other pavilion options, as well as architect Kate Ball. And Ken Twombly has also given us a lot of advice along the way. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that there's been a lot of help along the way from people that really want to see this succeed. I also want to thank the commission for your volunteering and your time. We look forward to moving this forward. We think this is an outstanding addition for the Town of Monroe. I'm going to turn it over to Dave now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thought it was important that we start off with an introduction as to why we're here and how long it is in the nitty-gritty. I'm Dave Bjorklund. I'm president of the firm, the St. Bjorklund Associates. We have offices here in Monroe. The first application, as was noted, is the change of zone. Just to give you a little more background, we go a little bit further back in time than Tom did. 106 of the 170 acres, which is the area delineated in green up on the screen, was subject to a change of zone and a special exception permit back in 1990. And the Planning and Zoning Commission granted a change of zone to what was at the time called a Design Residence, or DR, which has now been changed to your MFR, your multifamily residential regulation. That was adopted, and what transpired in the meantime was, in '03 and '04, the developer decided that he would sell the property to the trust for public land. And with the Town of Monroe participating and DEEP participating in '04, the property was transferred to the Town of Monroe. It was, it was, Tom said this was a great thing for the Town of Monroe, and that everybody got together. It was just one little thing. They forgot that it was zoned for multifamily, which really wasn't compatible with the use that everybody had bought into. It was going to be town-owned open space, and it was going to be used for earmarked for outdoor education specifically. And then over the years, the Discovery Zone park grew, and a parking lot was developed at the site by the Public Works Department. And when this finally landed in my lap, Tom, Tom DeBlasi, and Dave Ball came to me and said, "We need somebody to negotiate through weapons and zoning." And I didn't think we were looking at a zone change, but when I went back and we sat down with Will and Scott, we said, "This isn't compatible." So the first thing that we knew that we had to execute was a change of zone. It was decided that if we just went back to the three-acre, which is where all the land around the property is currently zoned, that there would be, the permitted uses within the three-acre zone would allow us to do what was currently happening on the piece of property. And what the ultimate proposal was that the town could develop a pavilion on the property. So this is a little, it was a little messy, but this is really housekeeping in order to get... This probably should have happened back when the transfer took place. It would have been a lot easier. I don't think anybody was really thinking at that point in time that it was zoned multifamily. So the first application that we filed this evening is to seek the change of zone. Simply take it back to RF3, which was until the zone change was granted. The change of zone is compatible with the POCD. It's definitely compatible with the neighborhood, as you can see from the map. Everything around the piece of property is zoned three-acre, and the area has been utilized as three-acre. So to put 100, this portion of the property is 106 acres. The total is 170 acres. To create that large piece of open space, dedicated to open space, and covered by an easement that is held by DEEP, can't be a bad thing for the neighborhood. Can't be a bad thing for the Town of Monroe. So I'm not going to really, I think this is probably one of the most straightforward, sensible zone changes that I've ever represented in my career. And I just think that this makes sense and allows us to move on to the next portion of the property, which is to develop a pavilion on it for the Discovery Zone park. I'd be glad to answer any questions that the commission members may have.
Start Tom at the end. Any questions?
Nope.
Jonathan?
No questions on the zone change?
I think it's fine. It's just unfortunate that this situation arose and that here we are trying to rectify something that didn't need to be. I think it's fine.
Dave? No questions. No questions.
No questions.
I have no questions. Why don't we just open it to the floor, see if anyone has any comments or questions? And so, right now, we are talking about just the zone change for this piece of property on Web Circle. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any general questions or comments? Okay, back to you, Mr. Bjorklund. Okay. What's the commission think? Close?
Close.
Okay. Hearing's closed. Okay, moving on. SEP 2017-01, file 1584A, 7187 and 431 Web Circle. Special exception permit application for new and retroactive permit approval of site improvements. Driveway parking, picnic areas, walking trails, and open-air pavilion, Town of Monroe owner. Will?
Exhibit number one, special exception permit application and narrative. Exhibit two, site plans. Exhibit three, warranty deed. Exhibit four, letter from Conservation Even Holder. Exhibit five, wetland delineation report. Exhibit six, notification letter to Warren Aquarian. Exhibit number 10, support plane mapping. Exhibit eight, fire marshal comments. Exhibit nine, town planner comment. Exhibit 10, building official comments. Exhibit 11, town engineer comments. Exhibit 12, response to engineer's comments. Exhibit 13, response to planner comments. Exhibit 14, plan set. Exhibit 15, updated planner comments. Exhibit 16, updated town engineer comments. Exhibit 17, letter requesting postponement of hearing. Exhibit 18, letter requesting postponement of hearing. Exhibit 19, updated plan set. Exhibit 20, response to town planner comments. Exhibit 21, response to town engineer comments. Exhibit 22, updated town engineer comments. And exhibit 23, updated town planner comments. That's all.
Okay, for the applicant. Start the other one.
I'm going to break my computer, that's why. I'm going to break the camera.
Please break it. My guy's annoying. Okay, go to that folder. Yeah, I did. It's loading.
Members of the commission, my name is Dave Bjorklund. I'm president of the firm, the St. Bjorklund Associates. We have offices here in Monroe, and I'm a professional engineer, registered in the state of Connecticut. Application this evening for special exception permit is for the addresses 7187 and 431 Web Circle. And what the special exception permit is for is for to be able to develop a simple 32-by-39 pavilion on this piece of property. The property currently is primarily utilized as open space for passive recreation and outdoor education. And it currently is served by a gravel parking lot. And there is some temporary outdoor seating that's associated with the park currently. But it really is a seasonal facility, although it is used year-round. And the intent here is to develop, formalize the parking lot in a more defined manner. The parking lot was built several years ago. I would say it was roughed in by the Public Works Department. What we're proposing to do, besides constructing this pavilion, is to formalize the parking lot, defining parking spaces, handicap parking space. We're proposing to relocate the entrance drive, because the one that's currently, that was constructed, does not have adequate site distance. And so the driveway is going to be relocated. This is going to require some stone walls being relocated and pulled back from the street line. And the, so we're going to be relocating the entrance driveway, relocating the stone walls, moving the parking lot. It currently isn't 50 feet away from the street. We're going to bring that into compliance with zoning and get that 50 feet away from the street. Add some buffer plantings between the parking lot and the, and Web Circle. And then constructing the pavilion. The pavilion is going to be, it's a simple structure. It's not going to be served by electricity or water. It's not going to have any sanitary facilities. It's simply a place for them to hold programs, especially when the weather gets bad in the summer and they need someplace to get, when the camp is in session, to get the campers in. Just to orient everyone, this is Web Circle currently. The existing entrance to the park currently is right about here. There's a circular turnaround in this area, which also serves as a parking area. Head-in parking area here that serves the facility right now. What we're proposing to do, this is the proposed pavilion area, which is right off there's the edge of the existing gravel parking lot. And the pavilion would be located right here. One of the reasons we selected this area was because we're out of a 100-foot setback from the inland wetlands, which are located here. And so we wanted to make sure that we didn't have any wetland impact. This is also an area, this is where the program area started. There's a trail that runs off in this direction here. And there's other program areas. This area here has all been cleared. It's grass. And this is additional program area, and just a general gathering area. What we're proposing to do is to construct, and this is all going to be gravel, compacted gravel surface, is construct a parking lot in this area here. And I'm going to elaborate further on that in just a moment. We're constructing a gated handicap parking spot right here. Currently, there is no handicap parking. Handicap requires that it be a party surface, so we're proposing to pave that. The circular area that exists today is going to remain. What we've done is made sure that this is an area where we can turn buses around it very easily. A lot of the schoolchildren that come here, come here in school buses. So we've created, we've separated the parking area here. Right now, they're all kind of coven, Wilkins first come, first served. So it's going to be a little more formalized. We're relocating the entrance drive here. Scott and I have gone over this. We went in the field and took a look at it and we decided that this was the optimal location. Right now, though, currently, there's a stone wall. It blocks site distance. So the proposal is to move the stone wall back to this area here. The same thing down here is to take the, the stone wall. To the north is a much more formal stone wall. This one to the south is, has been scavenged, and it is not, not as formal a stone wall. There's not much left of it, but what is, what is left of it is going to be relocated back from the street. We're proposing to have some plantings here. Again, as I said, we're moving at 50 feet from the street. So although these are kind of subtle changes, and I think they're all in line with this being a wooded, ruralish park, this is not anything like a breakaway or old park. But we are doing some safety improvements and just formalizing it. When Scott and I started talking about this last fall, we had assumed that this was worth... was worth being done by the Public Works Department, including the reconstruction of the wall. Scott had indicated that there was somebody in Public Works who was good at rebuilding walls, so this all fell together very nicely. None of the construction is particularly difficult, but we finally got together the Public Works a couple of weeks ago, and we ran into a situation where, number one, we're blocked by the capabilities, or hindered by the capabilities of the Public Works Department, and, number two, we're, as we all know, funding is going to be difficult to get appropriated to Public Works, and we're not going to be able to do this work. So as we discussed it at the meeting with Public Works, we did, it indicates some things that Public Works could do, they can get us some time with their backup, they can get us some dump trucks to haul some process that we're going to need, but it wasn't that they're in, they're in a position to construct it. So what we did at that meeting was we backed off, and we said, you know what, if this is going to happen, it's a lot like the Bjorken Pavilion, which is being donated, we're going to have to find people who are going to be able to donate this, and equipment and talents to getting some of this site work done, especially, there's some tree cutting to be done here, there's the rebuilding of the wall that has to be done, and it was clear that Public Works isn't in a position to do all this work. So, the, what was decided at that meeting was that we would scale back some portions of the work to be done. Unfortunately, Scott wasn't at that meeting, he'd already left to go on vacation, and I haven't had an opportunity to sit down with him and discuss some of the modifications that I see that we can do with the site plan, that's going to make this a little bit more volunteer-friendly and cut back on the scope of the work. One of the ideas is that we're going to cut back on the size of the parking lot, because that's going to eliminate machine time and eliminate some tree cutting and some earth work in this area. So I'm going to ask the Commission that we're going to have to continue this part of the hearing, so that I can sit down with Scott when he gets back and go over it, because the report that he prepared doesn't reflect what is on this plan right here, we have changes that are proposed that I want to go over with him. And hopefully, I'm very confident that this can happen, it's just going to take a little bit more armband, and a little bit, we're going to need to get some volunteers and get a few more donations than we were hoping that we would be able to get from the Public Works Department.
And we were talking about, not necessarily just phasing it back, but perhaps breaking the parking lot into phases, so that it could get, you know, on the plan, get it approved, but build what is necessary for the, a general park use, and then have, at least in the works, the ability to have a second phase of the parking lot, so that should donation come forward, we wouldn't have to come back here to deal with that for at least another five, ten years.
Yeah, this, this plan indicates scaling back to the parking lot, it still conforms to the regulations, it still gives us thirteen spaces, it still gives us the handicap space, but we're going to look at, and I really want to sit down, I want to pick Scott's room too, as to, you know, where he thinks we can, things that we need facilitate, that we, at the meeting that we had, we were willing, first selecting in Public Works, when we started to draw, I think there's some people who we think might be interested in helping to implement this. We've got the, the pavilion is covered, but we're going to need to get some help. None of it is really big, so I, I think, I think it's very doable, but we're going to want, I'm going to want to sit down with Scott, and he can have, sit down again with the Commission, so that Scott can have, have his input. The other item that is up in the air is the actual architecture of the proposed facility. Your regulations require that we submit building plans. And before I got involved in the project, this project, there was an awful lot of work that was done on it, by Tom DeBlasi, by David Ball, by Ken Twombly, and other individuals in the design of the actual pavilion. And then, we had a meeting, and I pointed out to him that there were, there was a lot of work that still had to be done before we could even talk about designing the pavilion, that we had, at one point in time, we were going to go to wetlands, and then his own change came up, and then the special exception came up. And what happened when we started to talk about architecture again, was the people who had, and they'd invested a lot of time, I don't feel I have liberty to, to share with how much time and money they actually did invest, but it was a lot, and they're not interested in firing up their resources again until we've got, have approval in place, we're confident. So what we're showing you this evening is, and Skip, we're not going to put this all over the pond, we don't have a lake or a pond, but, but this is the type of facility that everybody is interested in building, and so what I'd like to offer is that we're very, we're, we're willing to come back to the Commission, once the architecture is solidified and have the Commission review administratively or approve it as a change in the architecture. And I know it's, it's a little, a little rough ground here, because I know what the regulations say, but we just, the people that we have on board just aren't willing to step forward until they know that this plan is a done.
But it's, it's kind of difficult, we, you know, we don't even have dimensions, um...
Is that thirty-nine?
Building heights, or anything like that, you know, even, even some rudimentary elevations of the proposed structure, I mean, I think we need that at a minimum.
If, if we think that's what it can take, I can, I can twist some arms to get that, that much done.
Yeah, we don't need full-blown construction documents, but I, in order for us to approve a structure, we really have to know what the structure is, not, not approve it and then design it afterwards.
Duncan, in the next two weeks, until the next meeting, the meeting of ten, I apologize, one of the reasons we've had delays is because, as Tom said, I'm volunteering my time, I just have to be able to get to a meeting to represent this, but, you know, the next time we come, I will, I will try to come forward and see some more architecture, at least identify the wrong parameters, but keep in mind that we're going to be coming back, or we'd like to come back and share with you the final part.
Okay.
That concludes my presentation.
Unless anyone on the Commission has some real burning questions, you know, the site plan is going to change, we're going to be getting some type of elevations on the structure, so it might be best to hold off any questions because the plans are changing. But if anyone has a question that they feel is, has to be asked tonight, by all means, speak up. All right, let me just open it to the floor real quick. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Any general questions or comments? Okay, seeing none?
Thank you very much, we agree to continue the hearing.
Our next meeting is the twenty-second, but for information to be distributed to the Commission members in time, it would have to be into the office by three P M. next Wednesday. Okay, continue this.
We depend upon Scott, let's sit down.
Okay, we'll continue this until twenty-second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Next up, read the legal notice. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chamber, Seven Panhill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, June eighth, two thousand seventeen, at seven P M., or soon thereafter, concerning the following. S U B two thousand seventeen dash oh-two, file number one-two-six-two-C, seven sixteen Wheeler Road, Monroe Tax Assessor Map one-seventeen, Lot fourteen, application of Gary Howden, applicant owner, for a two-lot residential re-subdivision being identical to a previously approved but expired re-subdivision. The property consists of approximately four point one acres, located within a residential and farming District Two. Will?
Exhibit number one, subdivision re-subdivision application on Butters List, exhibit two, detention study, exhibit three, plan set, exhibit four, town planner comments, and exhibit five, ten engineer comments. Do you have the green cards? And exhibit six will be the, the priority of the pavilion, exhibit six.
Okay, and for the applicant.
Gary Howden, seven sixteen Wheeler Road, Monroe. We previously had a two-lot subdivision approved at the time we were ready to file. A couple of issues came up with the town, unfortunately, we just could not get the band names basically before we expired, so we've had to submit exactly the same that was previously approved by zone, no changes.
Michael, were you on the Commission when we heard this, the first time?
Yes.
Were you?
No.
This is the corner of Hammer Town and Wheeler Road.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Were you, Paul?
I don't believe so.
David was, Kathy was, Jonathan probably not.
Probably not.
Well, no, definitely not.
I would say no.
Let me summarize it a little, little bit more for the record. Existing lot, fronts on Wheeler Road and Hammer Town Road, there's an existing house, and an existing barn, and some other house structures in the back, they're all pretty old, and are they seventeen hundreds?
Yes.
The proposal is to carve off a, a lot that basically is like that, for a new house. There is, was an existing structure here that's within, this is wetlands over here, and this red line, I think, is the upland review area, that had to go away in order to satisfy setbacks with the new line that's proposed, that has already happened, that happened with the wetlands, and you've removed it already, I believe, right? So that's been satisfied. The house location would have a driveway that comes off of Hammer Town, it was investigated originally to go off of Wheeler, but because of sightline issues and things with the barn and other things, it just didn't, wasn't practical. A driveway here is practical, there's drainage, there's septic and well on this portion. In addition, there are portions of the right-of-way which are not requisite with to mention, and there is a dedication for conveyance to the town of a strip somewhere in this area with the subdivision, that with the filing of the plat, that would go into the right-of-way and be merged with the, with, and we still have enough acreage for the two lots. I think there's a construction. I don't know which one's which here, but... This is focusing on the proposed lot, again, the driveway would be down here, house here, this is septic, and then, I think this is drainage, correct, right here? And another one here, all meaning the setbacks, pretty straightforward. The lot is pretty open in this area?
It is, it's field.
Right.
It's an existing field.
And there are trees along the road, and the plan would be to retain those, so not having to add trees for the street trees. That's basically the application.
Has anything at all changed between this and the previously approved?
The only other change is the fact we took down, one provision was to take down the old shed for setback issues, and it hasn't been taken down, so previously the shed was there, the shed is no longer there, it has been, been inspected, and everything was fundamentally fine.
Okay, so as Mr. Howden stated, this is a re-subdivision that was approved by this Commission, it expired time-wise, nothing has changed, it's the same exact application that was previously approved, however, it is a new application, if there are any questions or concerns that any of the Commission members have, this is the time to address them, so we'll start down at the end.
Bill's already approved at one time, and everything's pretty much the same.
And each lot would be two acres?
Yes, well, lots are not all of those two acres.
Okay, thank you, that's my other question.
No questions.
Yeah, this is a two-acre zone, and the lots are going to be two acres, I have no questions.
I have no questions.
I have no questions either. Will, do you have any, any?
I don't think I did, I don't remember if Scott did.
Nope, he didn't have any comments either.
Mr. Howden, just give me one minute, anyone from the public want to speak in favor of this application? Does anyone want to speak in opposition to this application? Any general questions or comments? Okay, any closing remarks?
No, thank you very much, Commission. Thank you for helping.
What does the Commission feel?
Closed.
Closed.
All closed. All right, hearings closed, thank you, Mr. Howden. Moving on, item number nine, site development plan, we have none. Liberations and determinations, item ten, extensions. Thirteen dash two dash Z C A, file number nine-nine-three-D, five-seventy-nine Main Street, and thirteen dash one dash S E P, file number one-five-one-eight-A, five-seventy-nine Main Street. We've received a letter from Q and R Associates LLC, this shall serve as a request on behalf of Real Time Investments and McDonald's Corporation for an additional extension of ninety days to record the special exception permit, thirteen dash one dash S E P, file number one-five-one-eight-A, and zone boundary change approval, thirteen dash two Z C A, file number nine-nine-three-D, approved by the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, originally dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen, which had previously been extended to December thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, and further extended to April first, two thousand seventeen, and then to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, for the property located at five-seventy-nine Main Street. If approved, the new deadline to record the approvals would be September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. As you are aware, the applicant has submitted a review set of plans for comments from the Town of Monroe Municipal Departments, and the applicant has received a review of approval dated April twentieth, two thousand seventeen. The applicant is in the process of addressing all the comments and revisions included in the R O A, and the applicant intends to file a final set of plans in accordance with Section A of the approvals before the current expiration date. However, in case of unforeseen delays, the applicant requests an additional ninety-day extension to record the approvals. Your continued assistance in this matter is appreciated. So we have a request for an extension.
Chairman, with Leon's absence, are you going to seat anybody?
I'm sorry?
With Leon's absence, are you going to seat anybody?
Well, you should.
The next on would be Jonathan.
All right, Jonathan, you're seated. We have a request for an extension, we have a motion.
Motion to approve the extension of thirteen dash two dash Z C A, file number nine-nine-three-D, five-seventy-nine Main Street, ninety-day extension.
And?
And thirteen dash one dash S E P, file number one-five-one-eight-A, five-seventy-nine Main Street, also ninety-day extension.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
I was just wondering, more surprised at how long these things...
Kathy, you're not seated.
Oh, I'm not, yeah, okay, sorry.
Any further, any other discussion? All the way, starting with Jonathan.
Form Kelly, yes.
Townsend, yes. Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Oh, you're not seated?
Paul.
I'll go ahead.
You're part of it.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't here for that.
You don't need to be here for it.
We're an extension.
Lisa, yes.
Yeah, it's just an extension.
You're here now.
Just a minute ago.
And as a chairman, I assume you said yes is what?
Meeting minutes, May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. Chair will entertain a motion.
I don't think I was here for that, so.
All right, I'll move to accept.
No, you weren't.
Right. Meeting minutes of May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, as drafted.
Jonathan, you can second that if you are of the mind.
There just needs to be one change to it.
Your name.
Yeah, my name. That's, that's all.
Well, we have a new.
We didn't call you, we changed your name.
Oh, that's fine. I should, I should, I should call this, this is Kerry O'Callaghan.
No.
Second, as, as changed.
Sorry, Jonathan.
Okay, so we have Porter, O'Reilly, Form McKelley. Can we?
They can, they can abstain. The other two, yeah, you just need, all three of you have to say yes.
What's that?
All three of you have to say yes.
And the other two abstain?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any, any corrections or comments? All right, call the roll.
Form McKelley, yes.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Townsend abstain.
Porter, yes.
Lisa abstain.
O'Reilly, yes.
Okay, thank you. Application deliberations and determinations. Okay, first up, Z C A, two thousand sixteen dash oh four, file number one-zero-zero-nine-D, one-six-one-five Monroe Turnpike. This is a zone boundary change requesting a change from RF three district to B two district. Commission has discussed this at a previous meeting and has found, has found to be in favor of the zone change. Couple of notes, the subject property is not within a map public watershed and it's not subject to a conservation easement. Commission also relies on the following reasons for granting the requested rezoning. The lot is not suitable for residential development under its existing single-family zoning classifications and given its proximity with immediately abutting business district two lands and presence of overhead power transmission lines running through the property. The B two rezoning is consistent with the goals and recommendations of the two thousand ten P O C D relative to establishing increased opportunities for expansion of the town's commercial base. All right, so, chair will entertain a motion. Who do we have on this? We have Porter, O'Reilly, Form McKelley. Should we seat Kathy for this?
Yes, they were seated when we did the deliberations.
So they're, they're still seated.
Yeah, so all these people are, Leon, I'm noting, is absent.
So Leon's absent, but Kathy, you are seated for this.
Okay.
And Jonathan.
And Johnson. Jonathan, Kathy, myself, and Michael. So chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Z C A dash two zero-one-six dash zero-four, file number one-zero-zero-nine-D, sixteen-fifteen Monroe Turnpike, zone boundary change, as drafted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. We have any discussion?
Brief discussion. This zone boundary change does not include the road that we discussed previously.
That is correct.
Okay.
This is just for the lot known as one sixteen, sixteen-fifteen Monroe Turnpike. It does not include the road right-of-way. Any other questions, comments?
Form McKelley, yes.
Lindstrom, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes, score zero-one.
Next up, S E P, two thousand seventeen dash oh four, file number one-five-eight-seven-E, two-thirty Roosevelt Drive Veterinary Clinic. This is an application to put a vet's clinic in an existing commercial building. We had previously approved the same veterinarian to go into a different storefront in the same building. For whatever reason, that never went through. But seek S E P for approval of change of use from retail to a veterinary clinic. Veterinary use requires a special exception permit. No exterior site or building changes are proposed. This is consistent with Monroe's P O C D and zoning regulations and the vet clinic is a permitted special exception use in the B two district. Site operations remain unchanged. All the activities of the clinic will be confined to inside the tenant space. They're putting up sound attenuation panels within their space. New commercial tenant into an existing built commercial center will not require or generate a need for new significant additional public facilities or services and will help advance economic benefits to the community by utilizing and repurposing an existing vacant commercial space. So, we have a motion. We have on this one, Porter, O'Reilly, Form McKelley, and Lindstrom.
I'd like to move to approve S E P, two thousand seventeen dash zero-four, file number one-five-eight-seven-E.
A.
A. E. Oh, A. Two-thirty Roosevelt Drive Veterinary Clinic, as drafted.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to point out that they seem to have addressed all the issues that had been left over from the previous application.
I agree, they, we did have some concerns with the first application and as Kathy said, everything, everything was, was addressed in the new application. Anything else? Call the roll.
Form McKelley, yes.
Lindstrom, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
And note that Leona Ambrosi was absent. Four, our motion passed.
S E P, two thousand sixteen dash eleven, file one-five-eight-one-A, two-sixty-nine Purdy Hill Road. This is the age-restricted residence district. It's a special exception permit for a multi-building A R R development. Property is zoned A R R. The traffic study, excuse me, has been shown that it will have a relatively minor impact on the area. The facilities have been designed consistent with the A R R district zoning, both in supplemental standards. This proposal is consistent with the P O C D. Will generate direct temporary construction jobs and indirect permanent service-oriented jobs as well as an annual increased commercial tax revenue to the town. It's a development of a private property and not, does not anticipate to generate significant new demands for police, fire, and emergency services. And we have the same four on here, Porter, O'Reilly, Form McKelley, and Lindstrom. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve S E P, two thousand sixteen dash eleven, file number one-five-eight-one-A, special exemption permit for a corner, as drafted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Discussion?
I'll just point out, we went around and around and around about the landscaping that I think we were satisfied with the way that got resolved.
Well, it, it, it is in here that the landscaping, if the landscaping is being done by anyone other than Mr. Twombly, they have to come back with the landscape plan.
That is, I think we may have.
Right now, the way that this, this approval stands is, I think, when they're up to eighty percent of the houses being completed, the house on Purdy Hill Road has to come down. That house cannot be used in the meantime for residential use. It can be used as a field office. The existing barn can stay. Public water will be brought to the site. The sign is not going to be illuminated. The site lighting is going to come back to staff or administrative approval before being installed.
Eighty-five thousand dollars, site restoration and stabilization bond.
Eighty-five, you said?
Eighty-five thousand.
Okay, eighty-five thousand dollar bond. Any further discussion? Anything? Call the roll.
Form McKelley, yes.
Lindstrom, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Note, again, Ambrosi absent, four, zero, one. Our motion carried, passed.
Anything from tonight?
The zone change.
We have the zone change. I would like to at least discuss it. Well, unless you, you feel otherwise, I would even be inclined to vote on this tonight.
You can if you like. I would prefer that you got it in writing, but.
Well, there's no conditions because it's a zone change.
That's true.
So it's, it's a pretty clear cut, either, it's either a yes or a no.
True.
It's not like a special exception where there could be conditions.
That is true.
This was a three-acre zone, residential zone. It got changed, I believe they said, like in nineteen ninety to the multifamily and now they want to change it back to the three-acre residential zone. It's town-owned property, it's open space property. And the main reason that we're looking for the zone change is because passive recreation is not a permitted use in the multifamily resident zone. It is a permitted use in the RF three. So, any further discussion? I'd like to call for a motion on this.
And again, this, I'm, the seating of Jonathan is the fifth player.
The four, four members and Jonathan.
Motion, am I to call for a motion?
All right.
Call for a motion to approve zone change, Z C A dash two thousand seventeen dash oh one, file number one-zero-one-zero-D, and that's seventy-one eighty-seven and four-thirty-one web circle. Zone change from multifamily residents to residential and farming district three.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Anything? Call the roll.
Form McKelley, yes.
Townsend, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lisa, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Okay, good. Five votes, motion passes.
Regulation review amendment work session, item number fourteen. We had a meeting scheduled for last week. I was sick, so we canceled the meeting. Will, we'll see if we can maybe set something up for one night next week.
I think it's not possible for me.
Not possible?
Yeah, I have two graduations that whole week.
Okay. So what about the other three days?
I like to sleep too. It's gonna be tough.
All right, we'll, we'll put that off.
Unless you can squeeze something in the day.
During the day? No, I, I work during the day.
All day?
All day and all night sometimes. I don't have any correspondence, do you? Commission reports, I'll just report that I have been working with Scott and Conrad and Will to a certain extent. We have a number of applications going back maybe four or five years that just, projects just haven't been completed to a point where we can just close out the file. So I picked out what I thought were the, you know, five or six of the ones that the job is, you know, substantially completed, they, either a conditional temporary C O has been issued, you know, businesses are open and running and it's time to finish the jobs. So.
You're still holding the bonds, I assume.
We're, we're still holding a bond, right, but, but, you know, they're not performance bonds, they're restoration bonds, technically. So I'm working with Scott and Conrad to try to get a lot of these things cleaned up, get the loose ends wrapped up and close out the project. So I just wanted to report that. I have nothing else. Any other commissioners have anything to report?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things that involve me. First of all, I want to say thank you to Will particularly for the terrific landscaping at C V S. I mean, the effort that time and energy that you've all put in with them especially. It looks terrific. It really looks, but I think it's a real asset. But I have a couple of the concerns that are not related to that at all. Yeah, if we're going to have zoning regulations, they do need to be enforced. And I'm wondering what the possibility is of us getting some help in the zoning enforcement department. I know we have no money, but maybe, you know, is there a way to get interns? You know, there's signs, there's flags, there's banners, there's lights, there's all kinds of stuff that's going on. It gets worse every day. And until or unless, you know, we get a handle on it or somebody, you know, assumes that we're going to just allow it to happen, like these builders, these businesses we were just talking about, they just hang on, they just hang on, we just kind of get blind to it after a while. And so I'm suggesting that we, you know, maybe find an alternative so we can get some help for a joke. Because I think once these things get removed, you know, it's not that big a deal to keep them gone. The little, the guy at the Chuck's Corner, for months, he would have these signs up that, geez, a dollar a pound or whatever. And then they were gone. Oh, well, they're back.
Oh, I have to stop in and get some.
And now, and now they're back again.
I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
So I'm looking for, you know, some kind of.
I will have to, you know, throw out there that there is a municipal employees union and I don't think that we could necessarily just bring in an intern or some other unpaid person to do a union job.
I don't know, I'm just raising the issue. I don't have any idea how it could be handled.
I, I, I get what you're saying.
And then, so the other, the other two things that I would suggest, because that may not be possible, might not be legal, there may be a lot of reasons why that's a terrible idea. And if we can't afford to hire a couple of college kids, you know, run around and knock on doors and say, hey, put your banner away, then maybe we need to rewrite the regulations to allow those things. I'm not in favor of that necessarily, but, you know, people are in violation. And if they're in violation, that means there, there's something that is not in good standing. So to bring them into good standing, maybe we change our regulations, we amend our regulations. We're not supposed to have outdoor seating. You could probably, every one of you could probably name, you know, five places that you know, that you frequent that's got tables and chairs outside. And.
We're working on a regulation for that.
Yeah, we're, we're, in the subcommittee, we're working on that.
Okay, because, you know, you want to make sure that people can pass, that the litter is picked up, you know, the, I'm not saying it's a bad idea or a good idea, it's just, again, these are violations and we pretend that, oh, well, they're nice guys and, you know, the tables are kind of cute and they got nice umbrellas, so we'll let it go. And I, I really don't feel that that's how we gain, you know, not only respect for regulations, but there's no benefit to the town if we allow these situations to exist and not address them. So that's my concern. You know, whether you like umbrellas or you don't like umbrellas or, you know, a lot of people have signs that say patio open or alfresco dining, those are other things, but. are other things, but it's just, it's, we, we just kind of need to, that's maybe part of planning, it may, yes, it's part of the building.
I, I agree with you, Kathy, a hundred percent and, you know, I've been telling people that, you know, change doesn't happen overnight. It's a gradual process and, you know, I'm working on it.
I'm not necessarily criticizing you, I'm just.
Well, no, no, I'm, I'm, and I'm not taking, I'm not taking it as a criticism, but I'm telling you that I recognize what you're saying and I'm working on it.
Okay, that's it.
Any other commissioners have anything to share? Staff? Nope. Do I, do I hear a motion?
You can't hear?